Everyone, it's a little bit past our start time, so our 3:40 work session, we're going to go ahead and get started with that. Shane, are you, do you know how to turn this on? It doesn't, I'm not on, I mean, I think you've got to do it back there. Wait a minute, testing, testing. We're not, nobody's turned on. Technology only works-
Well, some of it's the guys downstairs, too.
Yeah, it's on.
There we go.
Okay.
We're on.
Okay.
I'm not used to starting this first.
Okay. Keith, are you hearing this? Are you hearing mine? No? I'll use that.
Can you hear mine?
Good afternoon. We're going to start at the, with the 3:40 agenda, uh, work session. Madam Clerk, would you read the role, please?
Yes, Ms. Cole, Mr. Jones-
Here.
Mr. Schmidt-
Here.
Mr. Lynn-
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey. Mr. Welber-
Yep.
Mr. Hart.
Here, motion approved the agenda.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. We're here to hear some financial information today. Ms. Whedon is going to kick us off. Michelle, please.
Michelle, we're the Mayor's Department Financial Officer, and I actually am appreciative to finally introduce Kevin Smith, who is our audit partner with McGlady, who was in charge of our audit this year. We're always happy to be able to deliver this now, and I think he has some good information to share with you, some of you priorities seen it. And if you have questions, I think Kevin's more than happy to answer them. I always like to take this opportunity to thank Kevin and his team. They do a lot of work and spend a lot of long hours when they're here in the fall, and we certainly appreciate all their help and advice. And also, I would say the same to my staff and all the city staff, because this is a coordinated effort. I spend a lot of time coordinating information that other departments prepare and work on, so we all, takes all of us to work together to get this out to you. And with that, I'm going to turn over to Kevin.
I'm just always impressed that Kevin comes, usually it's snowing or icing or something, so today we've got nice weather and low grizzle and so forth, Kevin, so welcome on.
Thank you, this rain is a nice change, right? Uh, well, good afternoon. As Michelle mentioned, I'm here to present the results of the 2014 audit. As I go through the presentation, feel free to ask me questions throughout. I prepared a brief, brief presentation that will summarize the information contained in the audit report. So the presentation is the bound copy, it should have been right on top, about 10 pages. A pretty high-level summary of the results of the audit, but I'd be happy to go into a little more detail if you'd like on any of the topics. We'll talk through the, just a brief summary of the audit process, talk about the, some financial results. Also talk about the compliance reporting for the city. So if you turn to slide two, here's a few bullets just about the audit process in general. The city is required to have an external audit every year by, by state and federal requirements. And the, the purpose of the audit is really twofold. One is to give an opinion on the financial statements of the city as to whether they're fairly presented in accordance with the accounting principles that exist. And then also to report on certain compliance elements, both federal and state compliance. So the, the bound document, that green document, or refer to it as the CAPR, it's the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. You'll see all of the results of both the financial audit and the compliance audit included within that document. The very, the back section contains the compliance information, and then the rest of the document contains a lot of financial information. On the next couple of slides, I do have a very high-level summaries of that financial information, but I did want to point you to a few sections of the CAPR that are very helpful as you review that document. The first part of that document, pages three through 14, that's the management's discussion and analysis. So that is a comparative summary of the financial results, and also has a narrative that management prepares that talks through any significant changes in the financial results, so that's one great place to go to. In addition to the back of the report, page 100 through 120, that is the statistical section, and it contains a 10-year history of financial results, and also has some non-financial data back there as well about the city. But turning to slide three, this chart here shows all of the, it shows all of the governmental funds of the city, the revenue, 2013 to 2014. So you'll see there's about a $3.3 million decrease, or about a 3% decrease in overall revenue. The largest decreases you see there within property tax and also the intergovernmental revenue. The reason, the biggest reason for the change in the intergovernmental revenue is, is grant funding for the public works building last year that didn't exist in 2014. And then the next slide shows the expenditures by function. You'll see that the largest categories of functional expenditures for the city are the public safety and public works. Overall expenditures increased about $6 million, or about 6% over last year. And again, this is the general fund and all of the governmental funds of the city. Some of the larger changes you see there are within public works and capital outlay, and a lot of that is due to timing of capital projects. Certain, certain, within public works function, more capital projects taking place in 2014 compared to 2013. And then the next few slides are going to focus just on the city's general fund. So slide five, there's a pie chart there that shows the general fund fund balance as of June 30th, 2014. The general fund balance was $23.7 million, and that's broken into a few different categories based on the level of, the level of restriction on the fund balance. So the unassigned fund balance was $10.2 million as of June 30th, which is about 43% of your fund balance. There's a good portion of that fund balance, 36%, that is restricted for specific purposes. A, a good portion of that is restricted for employee benefits. The property taxes that are levied, that pay for employee benefits that are transferred into the general fund, that money is restricted until it's spent for the purposes they can be spent on. So only about 43% of that fund balance is truly unassigned, that hasn't been designated for a specific purpose. And then on slide six, it shows a five-year history of the general fund, both the revenue, the expenditures, and also the fund balance. You can see that revenue did increase in the general fund while expenditures decreased. So your, the overall net impact on your fund balance wasn't increased in, in the general fund in 2014. And to put it in terms of, compared to the expenditures in the general fund, slide seven is a, is a number that we look at during the audit process. The, the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, recommends about 120-day reserve, basically, on the general, general fund. So you look at your general fund fund balance that's unrestricted and compare that to your expenditures. And then you put that in terms of days to say, okay, if you had no revenue stream coming in the door, how long could, could the city basically exist? And that 120 is about the, the recommended range to be in, so you'll see that 2014 was 124 days, which is a slight increase over last year, but for the past three years, the city has been right within that recommended range. Then slide eight will show the, the enterprise funds of the city, so the sewer and the sanitation. No, no significant changes really with the operating revenue and the operating expenses for those enterprise funds. They are operating positively, so the enterprise funds are meant to support themselves. So you can see that, that the change in your, in your net position or your equity in the enterprise funds did increase in 2014 and in 2013, so that those funds aren't being supported by governmental functions. Slide nine will give you a, a brief summary of the, the compliance, the compliance reporting. The compliance section of the, the CAPR starts on page 121. So you can flip back there, you can see a summary of the federal grants that the, the city spent during 2014, and it also includes the results of our audit work. The first section there talks about internal control over financial reporting. This is where we would include any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses over internal controls. And there were no, there were none of those to report, and none of those are included in, in the CAPR, which is great. There's a few immaterial instances of non-compliance. The state, the state issues an audit guide that we have to adhere to each year as a part of the audit process. So there's certain state statutes that we test each year, and those, the results of those tests are included within the compliance section of, of the report. So there was a few items, these three items here, that were noted in there as findings. These aren't material findings, they didn't involve any sort of question cost or anything like that. But one was just the publishing of the council minutes that was just done a little late. They have to be done within a certain number of days of the meeting being held. And then if any of the funds have deficit fund balances, that's also reported in there as a finding, and there were a few of those. And then the airport cash deficit is also reported, and that's an item that's reported in there for the past several years. But no, no new findings, and again, no material, material weaknesses or significant instances of non-compliance. We also test, in accordance with the, the FAA issues a PFC guide for the passenger facility charges. So we have to test compliance with how that money is spent, and whether it's spent on the projects that were approved by the FAA. And there were no findings to report there. So in the back of, in the back of your other document, this report to the, the mayor and city council, you'll see a copy of that PFC opinion, you'll also see a copy of the PFC schedule that shows the receipts and the dispersments from the PFCs. For the single audit, that's the, the audit we perform over the federal, certain federal grants. Each year, we, we test different programs in, in great detail for compliance. And this year, we tested two grant programs, the Section 8 housing grants and the highway planning and construction grants. And both of those, we gave unmodified or clean opinions, so there were no instances of non-compliance to report for the federal grant test work. And then slide 10 is a summary of, of what you see in that other document that I referred to. The first bullet there just notes that the, the opinion that we issued on the financial statements, so what you see in the CAPR was an unmodified or a clean opinion. That is the, the highest level of an opinion that you can receive on the financial statements. If we had any sort of disagreements with management or difficulties in performing the audit, those items would also be reported in that, in that letter, and there were none of those to report. We did receive full cooperation from, from Michelle and, and everybody at the city that we worked with, and had no issues with that. One of the last bullets there, I, I did want to point out, and it's something I had mentioned in the past as well. There's been a GASB standard that's been out there for several years with some new pension reporting standards. And this will go into effect for the city next fiscal year. And not only the city, but, but local governments all across the country that, that participate in, that have either a multiple employer pension plan, so a part of a state plan, or, or have their own pension plans. But what this new GASB is going to require the, the city of Waterloo to do is, so this would apply to both IFRS and the fire and police pension plans. Those are cost-sharing plans at the state level. So the unfunded pension liability that exists at that state level is going to, will be allocated to all of the local governments throughout the state. And each local government will pick up their proportionate share of that pension liability and report that in their financials for the first time. It will only impact your, your government-wide or your, your, your full accrual statements that show up at the, the front of the report. These don't go into your governmental funds, so this is not a liability you'll see reported in the general fund or any of the other governmental funds. It will be reported at that entity-wide level. And again, this is, it probably will be a large number, but it's something that, that all governments are having to put on their financial statements next year for the first time, and it's, you know, it's something that, that rating agencies have been looking at for years. They've been aware, the standard's been out there. They, they don't really expect a huge impact on, on most governments. I think, as far as from a rating standpoint, I think they felt that less than 10% of governments would, would change, would change their, their bond rating as a result of implementing this standard. But again, I did want to mention that, because that, that is the, the big accounting standard that, that's out there that will impact, impact future years. That is, ends the, the formal presentation I have, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Counselor? David?
No, it's all good.
Good. Kevin, you do such a great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I believe we're good. Michelle, do you want to add anything?
Okay, we, I think we have no questions, so we just greatly appreciate you taking the time to, to come up and, you know, for such a short period of time, but it's really important stuff to us, and it's always nice to get these kind of clean reports, and everything looks good, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Much appreciated.
Do we close this meeting, or is it still open?
Still open.
Okay, go ahead. ... of our work session for a presentation from Doug Schindel from AECOM regarding the Sink Creek study that, I, I'm sure Doug will talk about it, but the, the drainage study that started actually many years ago, was updated in 2007, and this now has kind of a mini-update, and I, I'm assuming we can call it again, Doug. So whenever you feel comfortable that that's going to work, it's all yours.
Crossing my fingers here, so you don't just have to look at me, but-
Can you folks hear what he's saying? Is, is that microphone working?
Just, it's okay?
Yeah.
Right here?
Okay. No signal is not a good sign.
Maybe we have a little more. I think we're going to try to get started.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Basically, as this clicks on, a little bit about the presentation outline that, that I want to run over. Talk about a little bit of the previous studies, as you indicated. The first study was completed back in 1982, and then it was updated in 2007. I want to talk a little bit about the watershed and show the, show you the overall watershed drainage area. I'll talk about the proposed conveyance improvements, and then just planning level of construction costs estimate. We did, we did update them in 2007, and I went ahead and took a look at 2013 construction costs as well. And then we want to talk a little bit about some interim channel improvements that, that we'd like to propose and that you'll be probably looking at in your upcoming CIP, and then take a look at the Kiefer Estates addition on, on the drainage calculations that were submitted to us for review in addition to making sure that we accommodate for future improvements that we're going to talk about here in a little bit. So originally, the study was conducted back in 1982, and the original hydraulics, the hydraulic, and that was the basis for our proposed improvements that we took a look at. And that's where we came up with four basically alternatives for conveyance improvements to handle the, the 100-year flows from the Sink Creek watershed, and it, it basically had to do with additional conveyance improvements for channel improvements downstream. Two of those, when we took a look at the 2007 update, two of them kind of fell out due to existing development that had occurred, and we proceeded with the, the two that we're going to talk about tonight, and we updated the costs back then. Just an overall watershed review for Sink Creek watershed, it's about eight and a half square miles as it outlets into the Cedar River at the Cedar Terrace Drive, what we call Critical Point or Drainage Area at that point. It's about 6.8 square miles, which is over 4,300 acres. These are just some of the flows that are shown here in terms of design flows, and we did take a look for our ultimate improvements at future land use based on the, on the current future land use maps, and we come up with about 6,000 cubic feet per second for the 100-year flow, and, and just over 5,000 CFS for the 50-year, and about 3,800 CFS for the 10-year flow. And just at, at the Highway 218 Critical Point, the drainage area is about six square miles. This is the, the Sink Creek watershed shown here, as you can see, all the way to the western edge. There you did see for a minute, is Kimball Avenue is, is the western limits over by Orange Township. The, the dark line there shows the, the center line or fallaway of the stream as it crosses Highway 21. It also, my pointer doesn't work, but it crosses orange here by Hawkeye Community College, extends further to the, to the east end, and actually, it just runs along the South Hills Golf Course as it approaches Enhes Road, then it goes through Shallas over by the casino, crosses 218. If I can get the pointer to work here, here's the subdivision under review tonight. And then it crosses Cedar Terrace, and then the Cedar Terrace existing subdivision is here. And then it actually extends all the way to the east until it outlets into the Cedar River. Basically, the proposed channel improvements that we're looking at are conveyance improvements, and we're looking at like a 50-foot bottom width with three-to-one side slopes from, from 218 downstream. And we have an overflow channel that we'll take a look at here in a little bit.
Doug, I'm sorry, which improvements are you talking about there?
These are the ultimate, ultimate improvements, okay?
Okay.
With, with 100-year conveyance improvements, okay? And we'll, we'll take a look at a drawing that kind of explains that here in a little bit, this is just kind of a Snapchat of it. But basically, two alternatives we reviewed for the 100-year conveyance improvement. One has an overflow channel extending to the north. And keeping in mind that existing flows will go down the, the natural channel and outlet where it does now, but during the peak flows and 100-year flows, we'd have an overflow channel that takes the excess storm water to the north. And then alternative four, we took a look at another overflow channel extending to the east. Here's the, the proposed, again, this is the ultimate channel improvement. Starting here, here's 218, okay, and we take a look, and this is where our channel improvement would start to help convey the, the 100-year flow extending across Texas Street here. This is the, the Kiefer Estates addition that you've been talking about for the, the last couple of meetings. This is on the north side of the subdivision. And we'll talk about planning with the, the Kiefer Estates engineer and making sure to accommodate the, the future improvement if, if that would move forward. We'd have two new bridges over the railroad and Cedar Terrace at this location. Extend the channel improvement just to the eastern edge of the existing subdivision. At this point, there'd be a triple box culvert that would allow the, the low flow to continue to the east to outlet where it does now. And then during the, the peak flow events, we'd have an overflow channel extending straight to the north to the, to the Cedar. I was just going to show one other thing, if you can see the blue line on either side, is a floodplain delineation, and that's the existing 100-year floodplain as shown in the, the current flood insurance study for the city of Waterloo. And then the lavender purple line here is, is the current 500-years, so you can see kind of the floodplain, current floodplain limits on this drawing. This would be alternative four, and the other alternative that we looked at, basically the, the same type of channel improvements downstream of Highway 218. The overflow changes a little bit to where the existing stream crosses at this location, so we'd have the, the bypass channel extending to the east here with existing flows going down the, the existing channel at this location, the outlet to the Cedar River. And then this would be the, the overflow channel. This will be, when we get into the costs, the more expensive alternative due to the fact that we have a couple of additional bridges required. One at Folk Road and one at Whedon Road. And we also have the Nature Trail that, that will have a overflow crossing. In addition to that, it is another 1,500 foot or so longer in length, this overflow channel to the east than the northern option. These are just planning level construction cost estimates that we have updated for alternative three, and we split it into three phases, starting at the downstream and moving up. The channel improvements from Cedar Terrace to the bypass channel outlet is about $2 million as shown here for Phase One. Phase two is the channel improvements from 218 to Cedar Terrace, and that's about $1.6 million. And then we have the two bridges that are required to be constructed over the railroad and then the Cedar Terrace Drive Bridge, and those are about $2.3 million for project costs. So the total planning level construction cost estimate for alternatives three is about $6 million. And alternative four, shown here, are the same three phases where we have to build the downstream first due to the, the extra excavation that we have to do in terms of the lower invert. That's about 3.4 million. Again, that's the reason why that is the more expensive alternative is because of the length of the channel, plus the two additional crossings that we have at, at Whedon Road and Folk Road. And then the, the other two are very similar with Phase Two being about 1.6 million and 2.3 million for the bridge reconstruction at, at both Cedar Terrace and the railroad. Total estimate for, for that project for alternative four is about 7.3 million. Now, this is the interim channel improvements that we talked about, and these, you can see from the existing photos, the existing foliage that has developed and trees along there, and we've heard residents out there that, that obviously there is some clogging that goes on out there. So we'd like to take, take a look at doing this as a somewhat more immediate improvement. We've estimated construction costs at that is about $100,000, and, and we would hope to be able to get right-of-entry permits to be able to, to do that rather than purchase easements right away. We'd want to clean out the channel, basically, from Texas to Cedar Terrace, and if the subdivision would go, they would do that as part, part of their work, and then the city could clean out from downstream of Cedar Terrace to the, the eastern edge of the, the existing subdivision. We also took a look at engineers' calculations for the Kiefer Estates subdivision and took a look at the drainage areas, just to give you kind of a reference point on, on how much area this, this subdivision is. Overall, the subdivision area is about 60 acres, and of that, 52 acres are being developed into the, the residential-type area. The rest is the, the two drainage areas that, that traverse through the subdivision, and that amounts to about 1% of the overall drainage area for Sink Creek. to about 1% of the overall drainage area for Sink Creek. We kinda went back and forth in reviewing calculations with the engineer for the subdivision, Mr. Ellis, and we've come up with, I think, a really good alternative where we'd have detention basins within the subdivision, and he's indicated, and based on the calculations reviews that we've done, is actually decreasing the flows for a regulatory event or the hundred-year event by 30 to 40% over existing conditions, okay? So that means after the subdivision is fully developed, the homes in place and the additional street paving in there, basically we're reducing the flows from that additional impervious areas to actually 30 to 40% below what it is today, which is an agricultural field. So there's going on and above in terms of the detention ordinance that's out there now, we're actually reducing flows of existing condition or the subdivision is proposed to. The other thing that we kinda went back and forth on is to make sure that as part of the subdivision development, that we would account for the easement to allow for the city to proceed in the future should council so choose to have that channel improvement, the ultimate channel improvement going on the north side. So that would be the channel improvement, and we wanted to make sure we left room, and it's just over 100 feet because we have the 50-foot bottom width proposed in there and the three-to-one side slopes, and it's about 10-foot deep. So they have indicated that they would allow easements available for that when that future improvement would be constructed, and then they'd also go ahead and start at least doing some of the channel improvement in there. They wouldn't be able to take it all the way down to the grade because we're excavating it quite a bit lower, and in order for us to do that, we'd have to take it all the way to the river, but they would make a significant improvement in that stretch of the channel adjacent to the subdivision. So with that, I would open it up to any questions that you may have for me during the review.
That was quick.
David?
So with all your calculations and the additional retention area for the Kiefer Estates plan, in your opinion, does it improve the situation that the surrounding neighbors would be experiencing, or does it make it worse on any matter?
Based on the review that we've done with the detention in place, it would actually improve the runoff characteristics of that drainage area. There's 60 acres, like I indicated, and it would improve that in order of 30 to 40% of decrease of the existing hundred-year that's out there now.
And cleaning out that existing channel, how much more throughput do you think you would get?
I mean, we didn't run models on that. I think that would help for your pretty heavy yearly type rainfall, and that's just allow the water to get out of there quicker. It's not gonna handle, you know, the hundred-year like the ultimate improvement, but it will definitely improve the situation over what it is today. And those were taken in the fall, and it's pretty heavily brushed over with the leaves and foliage out in the spring and summer, so it would help.
Would you be making it any deeper or just removing?
No, not what we're planning now, right now, just because we wanna get right-of-entry permits, we'd go in and do some minor grading to help if there's any blockages in there, and then remove the trees and brush that are causing the current obstruction.
Okay. What do you do about erosion then, once you remove all that?
We'd have to reseed it, and then if there's any significant erosion, we'd have to take a look at potentially adding some riprap or erosion stone in some of the areas that have, you know, eroded significantly.
Okay, thank you.
Doug, is that the existing channel, if that were cleaned out, east of the subdivision, where does that dump then? Where does that come out?
So it outlets here, and I believe the existing landowner has actually cleaned that first out. It's kinda covered on our graphic here with the proposed improvement, but you can see in here where there isn't much tree or brush cover in that area, if that would've been left undone, it would've been similar to this area, but that area had been cleaned out.
Okay. Steve?
Can you get a copy of this presentation?
Sure.
Can you forward that to us? Can you back up and talk a little bit about the $100,000 proposal, or what would be the short-term, long-term of that? Is that just cleaning out the brush and the current?
Pretty much, yeah. It's minor grading.
Okay. But that would be from where to where? What would be the boundaries of that?
So basically adjacent, just to the south of the existing Cedar Terrace subdivision through here, and then depending on how the subdivision proceeds, you know, it could include that if the subdivision is approved, that could be accounted for possibly by the subdivision constructed and cleaned out accordingly, but where we would need it is downstream of Texas. So from here to here is what we'd look at, increasing the conveyance by removing the brush and existing.
So did you look at all about like going down to Fish Lake and Nichols Lake and that far down, and what that would entail?
Not in detail, but basically our improvement would allow like about a two-year to be going through, you know, a hundred-year event, so then, which is required by the DNR, we'd have to keep the stream flowing that direction. So it'd only be during the really heavy rainfall events that these, the overflow, either this option, which is alternative four, or alternative three, that took it to the north. It'd only be during those extremely heavy rainfall events that those bypass channels would be used, but the normal flows would go down that.
Well, and I guess, you know, not wanting to speak further to council members, but you know, several of us went out there and took tours with some of the residents, and my perception was, you know, if we would step back in conjunction with the Kiefer Development Plan where they need some fill to raise their land, as I understand it, that a very logical place to get that fill would be from that drainage way and Fish Lake and Nichols Lake and some of these things that have silted in over the years, that used to be lakes and now they're, they don't seem to be much more than low spots anymore, that that, I mean, it might be a mutually beneficial kinda one of those win-win situations that would allow them to get the fill without having to haul it in from someplace else, and it would improve that drainage flow. So I mean, that was, I guess, kinda what I was hoping might be part of this conversation. So is that not anything that, does that not make sense to you, or is that something that hadn't really been factored into this?
You know, if it's dredging the existing lakes, I don't think that would help from a conveyance standpoint or a storage standpoint, okay? Because that's below the existing water level, so you don't get to account for that if you're trying to detain or reduce the flows. There's no storage volume there, you're taking it below the existing or normal water surface. And the other thing that we'd have to be a little careful of is what that material is made of when they dredge it. You know, if it's a lot of topsoil and silts, it wouldn't be the best for fill material, but I mean, you'd have to, the states could take a look at that to see if it's worth doing, or if it'd be decent fill material for the subdivision. But sometimes you get that, if they're online, ponds like that, you get a lot of the topsoil and silt that gets silted in rather than the better material. Now, you're right, though, this area is going to be filled significantly because it has to be above that hundred-year flow. So they definitely could use the material, and I think I can let Mr. Ellis talk to this, but I think even with the detention basins, that we were recommending to reduce the flows so there's no increased runoff from the Kiefer Estates. I think he still needs additional material, and that lake was gonna be expanded. I might let him talk to that in detail.
So in your opinion, though, in order to, I mean, if you look down the road, it's all 5,500 acres, and at some point in time, probably most or all of that being developed, in your opinion, one of these two, all in the three or fours, one of those two would probably have to be done, and going in and redoing the whole Sink Creek flowage area, for lack of a better term, that's really not an alternative to three or four? I mean, that's not enough to handle the flowage or?
To go down the existing channel through here?
Right, right.
I think it'd be more expensive, and I think we'd have to take a look at, depending on, you know, this extends by some existing homes in subdivision further downstream. We don't have that on the drawing, but I think it was more costly due to the length, and then you'd be down at the existing elevation rather than upaways because these are overflow channels, so we have a weirder structure there, and we're not taking it all the way down to the total depth of the channel.
So we wouldn't have to build any bridges or anything, correct?
We'd have to expand the ones that are there. Keep in mind, we have, there's existing structures that are there, they're just vastly undersized for the hundred-years, so if we'd take that, if we'd take the improvement under the existing streets, we'd have to size those accordingly for the hundred-year conveyance. So we have to take a look at each crossing where it does now, and have to improve the, and open it up to a hundred-year conveyance similar to the channel. And these are not insignificant structures, you know, they're probably 100-foot type bridges, 100 to 130-foot is what we'd be looking at, so that's why the expenses and the structures and the crossings.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Wolf. Doug, you mentioned new bridges. How many are we talking, and how soon would they have to be built? Does it take like five years to get a bridge built?
Ah, it shouldn't take that long, you know, but the alternative three, alternative three is where we're doing the railroad bridge, and that will take some time getting through permitting and railroad approvals. And the other one at Cedar Terrace would require permitting through the DNR because of the drainage area size. So just in terms of the design length and permitting, and in addition, right-of-way acquisition is required, it's probably a year or two out before construction, you know, would start, and you'd have to get in there and do the design as well. So construction of the bridge wouldn't necessarily take five years, that, you know, could be done in a construction season, but the overall project.
The whole process could take five years.
Could take, you know, a year to two to design, and you have to acquire the right-of-way and to go through permitting, and then after that, go through the construction. And keep in mind, you know, I talked, we went over this fairly quick, but in terms of the phase project, you'd want the outlet built first, so we talked about building the outlet, you know, at the Cedar Terrace first, and then the second phase would be upstream portion of the channel, and then the third phase would be to do the bridges, so that would be the final phase of it too, and fairly sizable construction dollars as we went over, so, you know, it would be over several years, I think, of construction, depending on how we could afford to put it in the budget.
So do you know if the state or the feds would help us with these bridges?
I don't know of any funding mechanism for drainage improvements at this point.
Mr. Mayor?
Doug, if that stays the way it's owned now, and somebody goes in there and makes the minimum requirement for, you know, retention, they build a big factory and do the minimum retention, compared to what he's gonna do with residential, which is gonna be better, the residential or the current state with a minimum?
Right, I mean, the current detention ordinance is 10-year to store the difference between a 10-year developed and a five-year undeveloped, so that's their requirement, and this, we're actually looking at to improve under the circumstances, going from a hundred-year to a hundred-year and storing that difference and actually getting some improvement on the current conditions, so.
So by making this residential, it's better?
Yeah, and then, I mean, that's the second part of the question, I guess, there is much less runoff associated with a residential subdivision than industrial commercial runoff, so there's a lot less overall volume involved with that type of development than if you went in with some of this, I believe, is zone commercial M1, so that that would be a, could be, you know, quite a bit more runoff involved there and the storage requirements. I am correct on that, my lane, it's 10-year difference between the 10-year and five-years. Quite a bit more runoff under existing.
When you do the calculations, you gave a pretty good reduction in runoff when it's fully developed. Will there be immediate impact right away when he does, you know, they're doing something with a pond and doing the drainage ditch and stuff? Will there be a reduction right away, you know, as they start development?
I think it would be part of the P and Z process, and if this had moved forward, I would think that detention would be required in the first phase of the development would be required to reduce that runoff similar to what he has proposed. You know, it's a phased, I think, development, and again, I can let Mr. Ellis talk to that, but it's my understanding it's phased, so as part of phase one, if that would come before P and Z and suit council, I think that that would be a requirement that you could look at and assure that there would be reduction similar to what these calculations have shown for the entire 60 acres. So I think there would be benefit associated with this first phase. If it's 10 acres, you know, it would be less runoff off of that 10 acres, and the other 50 would remain the same.
That ditch, it goes down the side of the development now, that he talked about making bigger or whatever, that's just bringing Sink Creek water now down along there and toward the rivers, and I mean, they're just there.
That's the existing channel.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's right. But as part of this process, we've worked with Mr. Ellis, and as indicated, he would leave space in there so we could ultimately do the full improvement, you know, when that would be phased in or whatever year that would be, so it'd be easement as it goes through P and Z to allow for that drainage improvement to occur in the future.
Is that, but isn't he making some improvement on that to slow it down a little bit through that?
Yeah, he's also improving that, and we'll have some grading, and I can let him speak to this a little bit more, but it's my understanding that he will improve that channel somewhat, do some grading in there, and then the lots, as they push up against there, will have, you know, filled up to that hundred-year level. So there is some drainage improvement that will occur in that reach as he develops that phase of the development.
Mr. Mayor?
Doug, you know, based on some of the conversations we have with some of the neighbors out there, and to kinda encapsulate what they said, the ones that have been there for quite a while, you know, when they, and not to be casting any aspersions on any of the development that's gone on, but when they did the birch development, there was supposed to be retention, detention factored into that, and what we heard from the neighbors is since that development, the water's flow's gotten worse, and the same way with the aisle, that part of that development was retention, detention. Since that development, the water's gotten worse. So do you think that the detention-retention was not adequate, or do you think it's because of the continuing blockage of the normal flow of Sink Creek is the cause of that? If you had to, and I understand you don't know that, but?
Yeah, I didn't review those detention areas, and I can tell you that we have been in a fairly wet period with significant rainfalls occurring in the last several years, so I'm sure that's part of it, but I don't know, I think opening it up would help, obviously, and help the flow, definitely through this area. You saw some of the photos there, and you know, if you go out there in the spring and summer, you've seen, you know, what it looks like there when the foliage is there. So I think that would help significantly if we could clean it up similar to the downstream end. I am fairly certain that the aisle went through significant reviews during that detention, so I can't think that that would've increased it. I didn't look at those specifically, though, but I know they went through the planning process, and there's a detention basin at that location. I'm not familiar with the other development, I guess.
Well, and I know one of the folks in the audience, Mr. Elliott, probably four or five years ago now, determined upon himself to clean out a portion of Sink Creek that I think is maybe land he owns, and took it upon himself to do that, and I believe that that did improve the situation for some period of time, but that was only a certain section of that. But so in your opinion, to continue to do that through the regular channel of Sink Creek would be more expensive than alternative three or four? It just seems like that would be less, seems like that would be less expensive.
This definitely helps for the higher or more frequent events in terms of getting the flow through the channel section, but it doesn't contain, I think he would say that that contains the heavy flows. I think there's still, if you look at the water with, outside of your water, we have heavy rainfalls, I'm sure, it doesn't, the channel doesn't handle the extreme rainfall events, so if we would do that, we'd have to go ahead and do the excavate. So if we would do that, we'd have to go ahead and do the excavation and have like a fifty-foot channel with in there with the three-to-one side slopes in there too if we wanted to contain the hundred years, what we would look at doing. So even though this helps for a lot of the more frequent events, the regulatory flood event, I think you'd have to have some significant channel excavation extending downstream.
Can you show on that map or can you identify where the city limit, city boundary is? You know, for sure. Part of it's in the city, part of it's in the county, if I can understand it.
I think this is the city limit line. Can you see that, Noel? Is that correct? Standing here and then I believe it goes along that section line? I cannot guarantee that, we'd have to look at that, but I think that's what it is.
Is that channel going north on our property, do you know?
No.
That's private property?
Yes. Both of them would require right-of-way or alternatives, I should say.
Is that factored in those estimates?
Uh, yeah, we did include right-of-way costs in there.
Are we, Mr. Mayor, are we going to have an option or ability to hear anything from the Kiefer's or Mr. Ellis?
Sure, yeah. I didn't know if anybody else, I didn't have any more questions for you, I appreciate that, yeah.
We have twenty-five minutes left, Mr. Schmidt, and because of the interest in this, anybody that would like to speak or ask questions or whatever, just whoever's first to the mic, please give us your name and address, please.
My name is Kim Elliott, I live at 327 Oak Ridge Road. I'm up here because obviously both of your plans that have been discussed are going through my property, the farm that I've been on. I guess my first reaction is if you turn this channel north and head for the Cedar River, one thing that's going to happen to me is that you will pretty much destroy the value of my farm because it'll pretty much cut it in half and it's not very wide in through there anyway. And it'll, I won't be able to get to the other side of that. And if you head for the river and open it up, when the river floods, it's going to come back down that channel and it's going to come down pretty hard. I spent a lot of years trying to keep that river into the banks. And this plan would basically go up there and cut a hole in all the work that I've done to keep it there. Now going to the east, that plan is going through my property also and that's the existing flow. And I guess what I see in this whole thing is that the people here in Cedar Terrace that are concerned about this and are watching this is that Kiefer's estate is going to be beneficial. They're going to make improvements, they're going to put in holding ponds and all of this. The concern that all of us have is from Cedar Terrace to my property because that is the part of that waterway that has plugged up and it restricts the flow. If you clean that out and just clean that out, I believe that a lot of your problems will be solved because of Kiefer's development. It'll hold the water and slow it down. You open it up to get it by those houses, it will help eliminate the flooding that they're concerned about because right now, that thing is so flat that when the water comes up, it just spreads out and it goes right into these people's backyard. And if that was banked up like the gentleman has suggested and keep it in there, that would be fine. If what I have done isn't big enough for the channel that would come out of Cedar Terrace, I'll make mine bigger because I'm willing to do just about anything to keep that channel to go into the east and in the existing channel because if you turn it to the north, it's just, I don't, it wouldn't work very well for me. I think what the council needs to look at is fixing that short stretch from Cedar Terrace to my property and opening that up and allowing the water flow. See what Kiefer's development does as it progresses because it's not going to all happen overnight. This stuff is going to take a little bit of time. And see where the water goes once it gets to me. And they talked about, you know, the channel not being fully developed on the other end of my property and it's not. And one of the reasons that it isn't is as it comes around the corner on my property, I basically allowed it to spread out onto the farm and basically flood my crops and pretty much turns into a big holding pond and it helps slow the water down as it goes. And I think if you would get it that far and see what happens instead of trying to consider building bridges and roads and all this other stuff, is just to give it a chance as time progresses to see exactly what you really need rather than to say, well, this project's too big, we can't do anything. I would say back up and try fixing this short problem for, basically, I think he said like for a hundred thousand dollars, we'd probably fix it and see where the water goes. And I'll work on my channel and I'll get it to go and water has a tendency to want to follow its natural channel that it already has. I've heard of people that try to move it and it'll resort back to where it was before. So that's my suggestion is to kind of back up and look at a smaller portion of the repair and let the Kiefers go ahead with theirs, which will be beneficial, and let's see what happens. Let's look at it instead of trying to spend millions of dollars, which none of us have, and try a small fix and see what happens with that.
Thanks, Mr. Elliott.
There any questions?
Any questions from Mr. Elliott?
So just to make sure I'm clear, the area from where you started doing your clearing a few years ago to Cedar Terrace, that's the hundred thousand dollars? I guess I thought from what Doug said, you were saying that was west of there. Is that what we're talking about, Doug?
I think we're talking about the same location from where you stopped.
But you mentioned from Texas.
Yeah, that's what I didn't, I didn't follow.
That's a minor entrance to it. The main entrance to this creek is the one coming from 218 through Kiefer's next to Birch Cabin.
Correct.
The other one does feed into it also, they both do, but...
No, I was talking about the bigger one and that's what the quotas were like.
And that was from Cedar Terrace to the railroad bridge to mine?
Downstream.
To what I do.
Do you know about how long a distance that is?
I would suspect a half a mile.
And is that...
As I said, that would convince what you needed to work on instead of saying, well, we can't do it unless we go clear the other end. But I think, you know, personally, I mean, of course, I would want that. The one going to the east, to me, has more potential than turning it to the north. Obviously, it'd be cheaper going to the north because you only have me to deal with and obviously, I would fight that one as best I could and as long as I could.
And do we know for sure the area, again, we're talking about in this hundred thousand dollar project, is that in the city limits or is that in the county?
Does the city limits run on that section? Well, yeah, it runs on the north side of that creek, the city limits.
Long balls of this county.
Well, back of Rose Lane is the line that comes all the way down to that creek and then it goes east.
And it's private, so we would have to work with the private owners to get right of entry, you know, into there to do the cleanup, but hopefully, we'd be able to do that.
Because they own the creek bed, basically, the house, the property. Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
So Jim, what are we thinking, it's in the city or a combination?
It's a combination.
Okay.
I'm quite sure the board of supervisors would authorize.
Oh, I'm sorry, sure, that's why Frank's here.
You have my struggle with anybody.
A little bartering here. So the private owners, we'd have to negotiate with them to clean this up. But the alternative would be if they would say no, wouldn't they be in, at least those within the city? Theoretically, wouldn't they be in code violation if the areas are not cleaned up? We've had this conversation in some other areas too where we can't get the authority to go in and clean things out, but, well, because they're not, you know, they're causing a problem, but they're also somewhat in violation of our code.
Because I find it difficult that anybody would object to...
I don't think there's anybody that would object.
Okay, I thought, I thought there was an area out there when we took that one tour where they said they couldn't get that one homeowner to allow that area to be cleaned out behind his house. I thought somebody told us that. You don't know what I'm talking about? Okay, maybe I misunderstood.
Have a refuse, you know, that doesn't want it because it's a concern. The water keeps coming and it's going to continue to flow down through here.
And Mr. Ellis wanted to do is make sure he didn't bring a sheet back in or put that back in.
Okay, maybe I misunderstood.
Yeah, nobody wants to spend the money to do it, obviously, but, you know, the plan... The only one, the only part of this section that is maybe around this, which is owned by Roger Castle, he has no houses, no, no nothing on it, it's an empty lot. He would, you know, I don't know why he would be concerned about it either because it'd be no benefit to him than not to it.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Yes?
I have a question for you. On this development here, if they fill all this land in, where's all that water going to come to?
Sir, I'm sorry, give us your name and address.
Captain Kavanaugh, 139 tribal.
Thanks, Kevin.
If they fill all this in, $10,000,000, all that water come down, where's it going? Is it going to flood Birch and all this around businesses around here? It's going to make the problem worse upstream?
Can this go on the screen or...
I don't know. Craig?
Show it on the drawing.
He's on his way back there.
So the question was, because this is in the hundred-year flood plain, when that area gets filled up like it's required to do for our flood plain ordinance, where does the water go and does it make it worse for Birch Cabin downstream? And so this area will get filled up above the hundred-year and storm sewers will take it from the streets and the lots into detention basins.
Could you go into... Could you speak into the microphone? I'm sorry, but nobody on television can hear you if they're watching it.
So the question was, where does the runoff go from this area when it gets filled up above the hundred-year elevation and would it flood surrounding property? And the plan is, based on the developer's engineer, is to construct several detention basins within the subdivision that the runoff would flow into by storm sewer and then it would be released at a controlled rate and outlet into this channel that would be constructed at the same time as the subdivision. But as indicated, based on their calculations and the storage volume in the detention basin, detention basins within the subdivision will be released at a reduced rate over what is the runoff is under current conditions, which is an agricultural field. You ask, you ask where would the water go and it would go into this channel and just where it does now and there'll be a little bit of improvement in here based on the subdivision.
It's not going to back up and flood anybody upstream?
No. It's the same runoff or less that goes there now.
I'm sorry, Mr. Kavanaugh, but again, if you have questions, if you'd please come to the microphone because the folks that are trying to watch on television can't hear you. Please. Is there anyone else?
Mayor?
Yes?
Dale Carroll, 130 Tribal Road. We had a meeting with Mr. Ellis on the Thursday across from us. Now, he did say, he said that something about the rain has increased that. He told us that meeting in Hawkeye Tech was built and the coming additions and the parking lots and all that, the addition of those, it never, just always the minimum, if any, were called, that required water retention. And then when the aisle and Birch Cabinets and the Lost Island Park was built, the way you talk, it's just a minimum requirement. I mean, they just haven't fulfilled the minimum requirement of water retention. And I know people that have been there for forty-one years and it rained a lot in those forty-one years. I don't think it rained anymore at, I don't know, eight and ten, it rained a lot. They've had water coming across 218. Well, this last summer, they had blocked off Shawls right in front of the casino because it flooded and that's been through, that was thirty-four times. And I also do understand that what Mr. Elliott said, that I think one of the guys that's been longer than I have said the waters, I think, I don't know if it's a channel before it was, it went through Mr. Elliott's hand and the water, the river would back up, go into the, into this field, so I don't know if that would be the solution now. But I guess what kind of guarantee do we have that it's not going to get worse? Is there a signed guarantee or a financial bond or...
No, I mean, we're not asking Doug to do that. You know, we asked Doug to do a study and I think that, and I don't want to put Mr. Schindler on the spot. I mean, he's an engineer and he's done this to the best of his knowledge with all of the information that he has, so...
I was just asked to react to that.
Yeah.
People are pretty worried about this. I guess one thing we were wondering, the storm sewer fees, I don't know what they total in a year. I don't know, really, they're only what, just a 230 a month or 270 a month?
Yeah.
But I was wondering if that's available online, the total in a year that it comes to and what it's actually spent on, if that could help us, anything?
Is that public, is published anywhere, Michelle?
We don't have necessarily that detail online. That fee raises about 1.7 million a year. It is used for street sweeping to comply with our MPDS permit, some storm sewer maintenance crews and the storm water quality management activities that are done by Wayne Castle and Phil Schubert. And a small amount, about half a million, maybe less, we are spending on storm sewer improvements. It would not begin to touch a significant drainage area, you know, that's being requested here.
Well, I guess I'll let you see if there's anything else.
Thank you. Mr. Ellis, do you have anything that you want to add? Anyone, Mike's home, we got about seven minutes left, eight minutes left for anybody that would like to speak.
Jim Ellis with JDE Engineering and GMJQ Industries. We did bring some of the exhibits and we'll have them in the back in case you'd like to look at them. Just looking at the size of the addition and the different options, either residential or other, that we're looking at. Also, we'll have drainage calculations available. If you'd like a copy, I can email this to you. This relates to the Kiefer addition. So these were put together at the request to look at all of the future runoff on the subdivision when it's fully developed, so we can get you that too. So if any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Any other question? Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. Ellis, so you heard the conversation about the St. Creek drainage area there where some of it is solid and blocked.
Yes.
Would it be logical that that might be some fill that you could use for your development? Have you gotten to the point of looking at that yet or not really?
Well, it really depends on the quality of it, definitely. We could take a look at it. We could run TERRIC on and have them take some samples of it to see if it's a material that we'd like to use underneath the houses and in that area. We do have a lot of material on site because we're still looking at making the ponds large enough. We've taken the ponds off of the drainage ways at Doug's request and I do agree that the basin upstream is so large that if we left those ponds on the channel, there is a possibility in a large enough storm that... there is a possibility in a large enough storm that upstream could take the volume away before our development would have a chance to use it. So we've moved those ponds off of the main channel in various locations throughout the development. Those ponds aren't big enough to hold a hundred-year storm, so they're still very large ponds. But, but there is a lot of material on site that we'd like to use first, but that, that's always a backup because we do have a lot of material to move. And that's in the range of 250,000 yards of material. So if we do run into problems with material, there's that that we can look at as an option. I know there's some other drainage projects around town and some construction jobs that have 10, 15, 20,000 yards that are coming off of them that we could also use, short of the distance to move the dirt, but less expensive it is, so. We'll keep, we're keeping an eye on each one of them depending on how much material we need. Through an option.
Thanks, Jim.
I do have one more statement to make. I'm gonna ask for a guarantee. There's never a guarantee when you start dealing with water. You do the best you can to try to deal with it and if it overtakes you, you step back and let it go and re-deal with it again. Because, I mean, I've been on the Cedar River and this creek for 50 years now and I've seen what it can do and what you can do to prevent the floods and, and you'll never get it 100%. You can only do the best you can to try to keep it where you want it and not go where you don't want it and stuff.
Thanks, Mr. Ellis. Well said.
My name's Richard Smock, I live in 925 Bell Street. I moved in there Labor Day 1968. When I moved in, I'd come down the Port Road, there was maybe three or four houses along the Port Road, turn off in Cedar Terrace and five or six there, and then the Cedar Terrace developed. There was nothing to the south of me. There was nothing there. Crossroads, nothing. Now, all this development that's, you look along there, it all has runoff water and it goes south. And you look at the casino, the golf course, Hawkeye Tech, and all these places, we're all getting that runoff. And the St. Creek Basin is getting worse and worse. Used to be, you'd get a heavy rain, the ditches would fill up with water, and you have your little kids, I raised two little kids out there, and they'd get three, four feet of water and you had to watch out so they'd get out in the water. Well, you get two inches of rain out there and now the ditches fill up pretty good, but the coves run full. And that's one observation I want to give to you. Another, you're talking about these retention ponds in the Kiefer addition. Who's going to maintain them? No one's saying, no one's told me that. You can dig, dig a hole and make a big berm around it, have a retention pond, but who's gonna maintain it? I don't think the city has. Or the landowners that buy the lot and stuff, are they gonna be responsible for maintaining it?
You know what, that's, Mr. Smock, Mr. Ellis, that, that question's been asked several times, been asked here, and I, I don't know how to answer that. Can you?
We all wanna, we all wanna know what the answer is.
And that's what, would you, can you answer that, Jim?
Jim Ellis, JDE Engineering again. We have two options with the, the maintenance of the, of the detention basins in the areas out there. One, we could actually put together a neighborhood association and then each neighbor, each neighbor would actually be responsible, there would be a fee to live in that area and take care of, of those ponds throughout the subdivision. Two, we have another idea that we may take it and actually make the maintenance responsibility adjacent to the individual lot. So in the deed of dedication, we may, you know, if you're mowing your yard, you may mow a little bit farther. Both of those options, you know, there's, there's positives and negatives to each option. But in any case, it's gonna be the development and the people that live there that are gonna have to maintain the ponds.
Thanks. Mr. Smock, you got about, about a minute left.
Okay, that'll, that'll be in the abstract, I suppose, when they buy the lot, that they'll be in.
Oh, sure.
That'll, that'll be in.
Yeah.
Not just for mowing.
No.
But for taking the silt out.
I don't know what they're going to say in the abstract, but certainly that would be part of it.
Then I got one other comment.
Yes, sir.
In the early 1970s, I was a young apprentice lineman for the utility company, and I was on a trouble call. We came down East Fourth Street in the early 70s, we got the Chamberlain Manufacturing, Rabotracks, we stopped. The water was coming over Burden Creek to Gates Park, went over East Fourth Street, went down the street, car was coming up there, flowed, came up, floated and floated between the houses. And guess what we, the city and the county did a few years later to hold that runoff water? Well, go up on Moline Road.
Oh, yeah.
Okay? Maybe some people haven't been up there and seen that project, but that holds the runoff or the retention water.
Thank you, Mr. Smock.
And the St. Creek drainoff is getting to that, getting to that point right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're out of time for this particular work session. There will be another one. Thank you. Mr. Morrissey wanted me to make sure that I announced that his, his meeting will be January 7th. And Jim, maybe, you know, I don't know what time and where.
Four o'clock.
Four, okay, the, the meeting with Mr. Morrissey, Councilman Morrissey and, and the neighborhood will be at four o'clock on January 7th, back in the Molenoff Room, which is the back part of this room back there, so everybody please come to that also. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Jones?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey? Mr. Schmidt?
Here. Motion to approve the agenda is proposed.
Second, a motion to approve the agenda, those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.
Mr. Schmidt?
Chairman, I'd like to take that item of Business Waterloo Center for the Arts Restroom renovation project. Motion to approve that?
Okay, a motion to approve the restroom renovation. Is there any discussion and any question? Is this similar to what was done at the library?
Craig Clark, building official. I guess you could say similar, it's a lot larger project, there are a lot larger bathrooms. But yeah, it's a total renovation and of the entire ones right by the shorts room.
And do we have changed orders at the library? Did that run into more than we thought?
We're currently bidding it right now, it's just started, they, all the demo's done. So far, nope. That's a pretty good sign after all the demo is done and we're still within project cost.
And this one's substantially larger?
It is substantially larger. That project, I think, was like 126,000. We're thinking this will be over 300,000.
Really?
Yes.
Does it have to be done now? Is there a problem with the plumbing and such, or is it more cosmetic?
Several different items. Some, a lot of it is cosmetic, obviously. But there is some plumbing problems that we've had with lines breaking and this will put, half the Center for the Arts has a basement underneath it, the other half doesn't, so these lines are actually under the floor in there and we've had trouble with those breaking and having to put them overhead and that type of stuff, so. This will eliminate all those lines and put them all overhead so we can work on them in the future.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions?
Yes, sir.
Those in favor of Waterloo Center for the Arts Restroom renovation vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that item passes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, we have a motion to adjourn. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.
We could call the boards and commissions meeting to order if you'd read the roll, please.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion, a second for the agenda, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We have an agenda, if one or two gentlemen would like to take that item.
Mr. Chairman, move that we received and filed Mayor Clark's recommendation for Arlene Humble to the Airport Commission with an expiration date of 6/30/2015, and this is a new appointment.
Second.
We have a motion, a second for that appointment. Questions, comments?
I was curious about the date. Why is it only?
It's the vacancy.
Oh, it's the only vacancy. Okay, great.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion, all, I believe we have a motion to approve this, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, second to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you. Secretary, if you read the roll, please.
Ms. Cole? Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda is proposed, and also the minutes of December 15th.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on the agenda, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. David, if you want to take the travel requests.
Okay, the travel requests. We have Police Lieutenant Campbell for Supervisory Survival, St. Paul, Minnesota, 1/2015, your 1/2215, not to exceed 683,000, uh, 683 dollars, sorry. Careful now.
You got to butt the mayor's attention.
Wayne Castle, Associate Engineer for SLSI Workshop in Ames, Iowa, 1/16/2015, 130 dollars. And Garrett Gingrich, 48 hours EMS refresher in Marion, Iowa, 2/27/2015, to 2/28, I'm assuming 2015, as opposed to what's stated, not to exceed 300 dollars.
Second those three items. Any questions, comments, discussions? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Would you like to pre authorize to?
Certainly.
Go for it.
Okay, pre authorizations. We've got building maintenance, 3,459.10 for additional drywall and painting for service corridor for Five Sullivan Brothers Convention Center. Building maintenance, 11,853.8 for 103 LED lights for dimmers for Five Sullivan Brothers Convention Center. Building maintenance, 7,400 dollars for painting and sheet rock for second floor library. Building maintenance, 9,180 dollars to replace sewer at fire station number six. Building maintenance, 5,458 dollars for six IP video cameras for Five Sullivan Brothers Convention Center. Leisure services not to exceed 6,000 dollars for equipment, parts for golf course turf equipment. Leisure services, 6,655 dollars for one Henderson FSP salt sand spreader. Police, 1,344 dollars for four MK battery, sealed six volt solar batteries. Traffic, 1,325 dollars plus 120 dollars shipping for 112 inch brackets and traffic, 1,820 dollars plus 150 shipping for 35 150 watt 120 volt ballasts. Waste management, 44,269.20 for replacement parts for disinfection unit.
Second those items. Any questions, comments?
Question on the 44,000 for replacement parts for disinfection unit?
Mr. Smith?
Mr. Smith?
Larry Smith, and Lieutenant Waste Management Services. This is replace several sleeves, sleeve holders, wiring, associated equipment on the unit. It was turned on without being in the water and messed up one of the banks pretty well.
How does that occur, that someone turns it on without being in the water?
I would rather not discuss that because it's still under investigation. We have the police department investigating it.
Okay.
Is that appropriate?
There's a, there's a vandalism case, David, you know, but there's a police case.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, okay, that actually answers that question very well, thank you.
Then I also had a question. Dan, I'm not sure this is for you, but this 9,000 dollars for to replace the sewer at the fire station number six, do you know anything about that? Or Craig?
Craig Clark, building official. Station six, the sewer was broke underneath all the concrete. How it happens, nobody knows for sure, but we had it TV'd and it stopped working, it was backing up, and we had it TV'd and there was a break in it and it actually had dropped down a couple inches and.
actually had dropped down a couple inches, and, uh, we had to have it replaced.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, those items are approved. Also have, uh, a motion to approve the project budget amendment for the purchase of a new snow compact or roller project in the amount of one thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars, and that's funded with a donation from the Cedar Trails Partnership, so I make that motion.
Uh, second.
A motion, a second on item, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Is there any discussion on that item?
No, I'm sorry, any discussion?
Paul, what, what, what's the roller for, is it, is it for burns?
Yes, it's for, um, tracking for cross-country skiing, requires snow though, so far, March like in this winter, but skiers are not.
Okay.
That's what it's for, and it's funded entirely by that person.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, now that is approved, also will pay the bills, make a motion to pay those, this week they are one million three hundred thirteen thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-eight cents, that's one comma three one three comma one one five point eight eight.
Second.
A motion, a second to pay the bills, any conversations, seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Bills will be paid.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor signify by voting aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.
Council, do you have any questions or comments regarding the agenda or the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
I'd like to move that we receive, place on file, and approve the consent agenda, item, uh, one A through B six, also with the approval of the consent agenda, I move that we make our bills payment, which we read by our finance vice chair.
Our bills this week are one million three hundred thirteen thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-eight cents, that's one comma three one three comma one one five point eight eight. Second.
Very good, there's a motion and a second, uh, council, do you have any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? Madam Clerk, please, it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries, and I have to acknowledge some folks tonight, first of all, Arlene Humble, Arlene, you just stand up if you would please, Arlene, uh, is joining us on the Airport Commission, and as I always say, Arlene, to everybody, you know, our, our, our boards and commissions are really important, uh, they're all volunteers, people step up and give of their time and their talent, uh, to the boards and commissions, and the airport is particularly important to us because it's, uh, it's just so vital to the vitality of the community, so, uh, through your experience and expertise in the travel business, we're very much looking forward to having you join us, and, and Mr. Caspari as the Airport Director on our Airport Commission, so welcome aboard, and, and thank you for volunteering of your time, appreciate it very much. Yeah, and Mr. Hart said we also had another flight, I think we did that, just because they knew you were coming so that we could get you more flights out, so, thank you very much, and you're, you're welcome to stay and, and watch the proceedings, but you certainly don't have to, and nobody will be offended if you, if you leave, so, there you go. And I want to, uh, also recognize, uh, there's some, there's some really special people here, Ella Ellis, who has been with the clerk's office for a long time, uh, Ella has been promoted to the position of Administrative Secretary in our Sanitation Department, she's going to go to work for Mark, wherever Mark, there's Mark, so, uh, Ella's just, uh, she's a sweetheart, and we've, we're going to miss Ella's, uh, personality in, in the clerk's office, but she's going to do a great job, uh, as an Administrative Secretary in Sanitation Department, Nancy Higbee has been appointed to the position of Administrative Secretary in the Clerk's Department, congratulations, you found somebody fairly quick, and Rusty Zay, who's been with us for quite some time, is going to be the Airport Maintenance Foreman effective January third, so to all of those people, congratulations on those appointments.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Hart.
Now, number two, I move to table the hearing until January twentieth for the rezone request by GMJ two of Waterloo, Iowa, to rezone sixty-one point one one acres from A one agricultural district to C two commercial district, and M one light industrial district to R one RP planned residence district located at the northeast corner of East Charlotte Road and Texas Street directly east of Highway two eighteen.
Second.
Uh, do we have any comments or concerns regarding that, anyone? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that, uh, hearing is table till the twentieth, thank you. Do I have to do a hearing? I don't know. Can we just table it, uh, Mr. Walter?
It's fine, if you table it, nothing happens.
Okay, okay, very good, you did just perfect, Mr. Hart.
I tried.
Uh, let's do resolutions three, four, and five, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number three, I'd like to make that motion, uh, approving change order number one for a net decrease of twenty-nine thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety-five cents for the fiscal year two thousand fifteen sidewalk repair assessment program zone four, contract number eight sixty-four, and authorize the mayor to execute said document. Item number four is a resolution approving completion of project and recommendation of acceptance of work performed by Midwest Concrete Inc. of Piastah, Iowa, in the amount of two hundred and twelve thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-four cents for the fiscal year two thousand fifteen sidewalk repair assessment program zone four, contract number eight sixty-four, and receiving file two-year maintenance bond, and item number five, if I could get my tablet to, aha, there we go, item number five is a resolution approving documents and adopt and levy the final scheduled assessments in conjunction with fiscal year two thousand fifteen sidewalk repair assessment program zone four, contract number eight six four.
Second. Council, do you have any questions or comments regarding three, four, or five? Madam Clerk, please, it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes. And motions carry, next three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Walker.
Number six is a resolution approving the award of bid to Ride L Chevrolet of Waterloo, Iowa, for the purchase of two compact pickups, pickup trucks for the Building Inspection Department in the amount of forty-two thousand seven hundred and forty-six dollars. Number seven is a resolution approving the award of bid to Phil Caldwell Ford of Hudson, Iowa, for the purchase of seven police patrol vehicles in the amount of one hundred and eighty-three thousand seven hundred and thirty-four dollars. Number eight is a resolution approving the request of roof development for the eight-lot final plot of St. Joseph's Square, Zone C three, Central Business District, located at the northwest corner of East Third Street and Lafayette Street.
Second. Council, do you have any questions, comments regarding those three, six, seven, or eight?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Just a quick curiosity, and number six.
Okay.
I was curious, why do we buy two-wheel drive pickup trucks, and whether that's the best vehicle for that type of work that they need to do?
Mark Rice, Public Works Director, uh, in conversation with the, uh, building official, that's his department, that's what he recommended, they don't need four-wheel drive for what they do.
Okay, then.
Very good, further? Madam Clerk, those are roll call votes, please.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Very good, the motions carry, and just a, a comment, uh, ladies and gentlemen regarding item number eight, and I see that Mr. Black is in the audience tonight, Jack, uh, I did talk to John Roof regarding the naming of, of that project, and he was quite surprised, quite honestly, that there was anybody that would, uh, not be approv- approval of that, uh, he did it, uh, in tribute to the old St. Joseph's School, and kind of in homage to that, that he thought it was kind of a, of a, of a cool naming, right, uh, so, anyway, that's why he did it, uh, Mr. Black, and, and again, like I've said several times, I, I don't know that we have any purvey over someone naming their project, so, sure, if you'd like to speak, if you'd like to speak, but I did, I told you that I would speak to him about that, and I just want to let you know that I did.
Uh, Jack Black, two twenty-seven Downing, well, at Queen of Peace, I'm Vice Chair of the, uh, the church.
Okay.
And when that first came out in the paper, I had so many parishioners come to me and question me about that.
Okay.
And some of them, including myself, thought it was a slap in the face.
Okay, you know.
That's the way we're standing.
I, I would, I would encourage you to maybe speak with Mr. Roof, uh, because again, I, I think he would be open to your concerns, uh, he just, he was really kind of surprised and taken aback.
Well, I know the, the priests.
Okay.
Uh, aren't very happy with it either.
Okay.
And from what I understand, uh, they have been considering of talking to DeBuch on that.
Okay, I, I, again, I think, rather than it coming from the city, if it came from the church and from the parishioners, uh, I, I, I think he may be very amenable to changing that, he was pretty surprised, and he thought it was, he was pretty proud of it, uh, and thought it was done in a, in the right spirit, so, I would visit with him.
It's not looking that way.
Thanks, Jack.
Thank you, Mayor.
You bet. Uh, all right, next three, please, nine, ten, and eleven.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Hart.
Number nine, I move to adopt a resolution approving the request by Farmer State Bank to amend an existing encroachment agreement to make changes to an eight-by-eighteen monument sign in the median of Nicky Street. And number ten, I move, I move to approve change order number one for a net decrease of three thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars and two cents for the South Hills draining, drainage improvements, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number nine, I move to adopt a resolution approving completion of project, recommendation of acceptance of work and release of retainage in the amount of five thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ten cents for work performed by Veed Construction Corporation of Cedar Falls, Iowa, at a total cost of one hundred and fifteen thousand one hundred and eighty-one dollars and ninety-eight cents for the South Hills drainage improvements.
Second.
Council, do you have any questions? Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries, next three, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number twelve is adopting a resolution approving, uh, professional service agreement with AECom of Waterloo, Iowa, in an estimated amount of one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars for the Phase Two CIP pipelining project, project number eight seven six, and authorize the mayor to execute said document. Item thirteen is adopting a resolution approving application for community development block grant funds in the amount of forty thousand dollars with a city match of fifteen thousand dollars for the upper gates playground equipment project, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to, to authorize said document. And item fourteen is the amended application, uh, or amended resolution approving application for community development block grant funds in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars with a city match of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Fifty thousand, isn't it?
No.
I'm got you, I'm, I'm sorry. Uh, yeah, sorry.
And that's for the Lincoln Park seating area project, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
I'm sorry, Mr. Schmidt, you're right. Uh, council, do you have any questions or comments?
Can I, can I ask, Mr. Mayor, could I just ask what the, uh, Lincoln Park seating, uh, what that all is going to entail, Paul?
Sure.
Yes, Paul Hennings, Leadership Services Director, this project would be to remove the existing kind of a lower area that's not ADA accessible, and it holds water, there's a drain in the base of it that doesn't drain properly, you go there now, there's actually a pond, or probably some ice in it, but, uh, we've had numerous complaints over several years about it just not being, not functioning well, it also has some rather old benches and just doesn't look representative for, uh, one of our major city parks.
That's right, they're kind of in the center, right about it, though.
Right.
Yeah, okay, good, all right, thank you.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Very good, the motions carry, fifteen and sixteen, the last two, uh, resolutions, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart, or Walker.
Number fifteen is a resolution approving agreement addendum with the Iowa Department of Transportation in the amount of four million three hundred sixty-three thousand dollars for the fiscal year two thousand thirteen US Highway sixty-three improvements from Congress Street, Newell Street to Jefferson Street, contract number seven ninety, and authorize mayor to execute said document. Eighteen is a resolution approving a supplemental agreement with, uh, number eleven with AECom of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount to exceed two hundred and forty-four thousand four hundred dollars for the fiscal year two thousand thirteen US Highway sixty-three improvements from Congress Street, Newell Street to Jefferson Street, contract number seven ninety, and authorize the mayor to execute said document.
It was number sixteen.
What's that?
At number sixteen, it said eighteen.
I'm not sure.
What's that?
Yeah, I'm not sure what you.
He said number eighteen, and then I read it's number sixteen.
Okay, that's fifteen and sixteen.
I didn't know he said eighteen. Thank you.
Very good. We got, we got the motion, is, was there a second?
Second.
Uh, okay, uh, comments or questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Motion's carry, could somebody do seventeen and eighteen, please? I think we can do them together, I believe.
Mr. Mayor, in, uh, um, seventeen, I move to receive file consideration pass for the first time in ordinance amending the two thousand and eight traffic code by amending section five four three through streets by adding subsection eighty-eight A Kimball Avenue frontage road stops to add stop signs on northbound and southbound Kimball Avenue, frontage road between Brook, Brookridge and Rachel.
Very good, let, let's just do one, Mr. Hart, I see that there's a motion to suspend the rules, and they're different, so, I'm sorry, let's just take the one at a time, please.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second on item seventeen, council, do you have any questions regarding that?
Mr. Mayor, oh, excuse me, go ahead. Sandy, um, I guess I, I'm looking at that, and I use some of the, uh, restaurants and some of the commercial places there, so we're going to have stop signs on that frontage road right where that, I don't know if you call that a slip or whatever it is that goes out onto Kimball, is that what that proposal is?
They're already up.
Well, that's what I thought, and.
This was actually recommended by the, oh, Saint Greg, old seventeen ten traffic operations, this was actually recommended by Amy Enchman, who's a consulting engineer for the Kimball Avenue project, um, and it came to me after they were already up, so, that's why I'm bringing it to you from the ordinance, um, from what I've heard, people are having trouble knowing that it's there, and they're going through them right now, but that was their recommendation because of, um, traffic coming off of Kimball Avenue.
Now, we don't have stop signs where we did the slips on, uh, Sand Marne in there, you know, on the frontage road that runs along. on the frontage road that runs along San Martin, parallel San Martin. I don't know, yeah, I just, I don't think that flows well at all, I think that's just a real, and I'm not an engineer, I think that's just a terrible design, and there's driveways right there going in and out of businesses.
Sandy, is that something that we, that you guys could do a study on? I mean, normally, we don't put up stop signs until you guys have done the study to see if they're warranted.
Well, the study was already done by Eamon.
Okay.
Through the Kimball Avenue project.
Okay.
So, I, you know, we can get back with them with Mohammed and get back with them.
I mean, have you, you've gotten complaints on it, or comments?
Well, we've just gotten comments that people are flying through the stop signs.
Okay.
So, I don't know if maybe, you know, a flashing beacon on the stop signs would let people know that at least they're supposed to stop now, because it's all new, so we can look at that, but they've already installed the stop signs, so.
But that what I'm assuming, if somebody's turning off of Kimball, and there's somebody going, flying through that, there's going to be a problem there, so those people on that access road needs to stop.
Right, well, one of the reasons is, is because the area between Kimball Avenue and the frontage road is so short, that traffic could stop up, stack up there if they had to stop to get on the frontage road.
But again, if you come off of San Martin onto that frontage road, you know, heading up towards Covenant Hospital, okay, that traffic is going much faster on San Martin than it will be on Kimball, and there aren't any stop signs, aren't those like yield signs where you go on and off there?
Coming out, there are stop signs.
Okay.
In the new, right in, right out, right on San Martin.
Yeah, just east of the come and go, or whatever it is, yeah.
Right, there are stop signs there.
But, but driving on the frontage road, there's no stop signs, I mean, that's, I just don't understand this. Okay.
That was their city, so, you know, I.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
John Sherbin, seventeen-fifteen Robin Road, I was going to speak to this after the meeting, but it was brought up. I came down San Martin today at about three, just a little after three-thirty, right in that neighborhood, and with the, and I turned on Kimball, and there's no possible way that people can understand the double turn lanes, they can't see them, there's snow on the ground, there's no way they can, it's just a mess. I, partner got sideswiped, my daughter goes through there fairly regular, because she has to go to work, and she's now found another way completely, she goes through downtown Waterloo and around because she can't get through, the people are not, they couldn't understand the double turn lane before it was redesigned, and they have no clue now. And somebody's going to, you know, there's going to be some pretty good sideswipes, anyway. There's just no way you can tell, I mean, you can't see the roads, the roads have no lines, if they get snow down there, you know, there's no chance, and they're also not even, so you see guys turning in and jumping off the curbs, and it's going to be some fun, thank you.
Thank you, John. Is that something that's going to be looked at when the project picks up again next year, or is that done?
Well, it's too late to paint.
This year?
That's the problem, yeah, so, yes, it's because of the, I guess the lanes aren't completely done, so they had to put that apron in.
Right.
So, yeah, it'll all be painted, and actually, probably thermal plastic.
Okay, okay, thanks. Further, at this point, it's a roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt.
No.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, move to suspend the rules, you aren't going to be able to do that, because you don't have enough.
I don't have enough members.
Do we still read the?
I thought we did, too.
I don't know.
I think you have to read it.
We haven't, when we haven't had enough even available.
Okay, there's.
We have, when we've had six, but not one, so I can.
I don't ever argue with the boss, Quentin.
We can skip it.
Okay, we don't have enough to suspend the rules, so we're not going to, we're not going to. Number eighteen, please.
Move to receive file consider and pass for the first time in ordinance establishing grades in the city of Waterloo in conjunction with the FY two thousand and fifteen sidewalk repair assessment program, Zone Four, contract number eight-six-four.
Second. Counsel, questions? Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Very good, that motion carries, and we're of the same situation there, we will not be able to suspend the rules. Item number nineteen, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I know, right? The last one here.
It's a holiday.
Jumping in there. Motion, number nineteen is a motion approving city of Waterloo comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year ended June thirty, two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, that's the end of our regularly scheduled business for our last meeting every year, it's time for oral comments, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the mayor, council, now is the time to do so, please just come to the microphone, give us your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Joe Appold, nineteen-twenty, Winston Place. I see that you talked about, asked a man in front of me, that you already talked about redoing this, I was sixty-three, repairing it, sorry I was late, it's been quite a day, I commend you, all you people for being here tonight, I see there's short a few people, you know, Christmas coming up, and it's a short weekend, everybody's got just much work to do. And the man told me that you did pass on the resolution, I'm sorry, you're passing that, what does that mean, does it include the overpass? That they're talking about putting, instead of the underpass, they're going overpass, where we were trying.
Joe, that's not what this particular item was speaking to, that is speaking to design work, and we don't have a final from the DOT yet as to what that's going to look like, but it appears that the design for that portion is going to be an overpass rather than an underpass.
That's what I gathered, but.
Yeah.
There's a couple other meetings.
Yeah.
You had nothing to do with that overpass, or?
That's not what this was about, no.
Okay, well, then I've got plenty of time.
You do, you do.
Even though I was running late tonight.
Yeah, and that will inevitably be a DOT project and a DOT decision as to how they designed that. Okay.
Bear with me.
Thank you, sir.
But as the city's money will be spent.
Some, yes.
The federal government's money will be spent, and they just have to appropriate more money, because I understand the Transportation Department, well, they were out of money, maybe they added two already, but it's a new budget.
Okay.
The state has, is out of money, the governor wants, and probably rightly so, needs more money, raise the gas tax, and then they come along with something like that, but I, and I hope I can convince some of you good people that it's really not necessary.
Okay.
I will be talking to Mrs. Greek, probably after Christmas, about, I understand it's not going to be done until like seventeen.
Right.
And so, about doing a study, traffic study on that.
Very good, thanks, Joe.
Well, especially with the, now you're talking about the Northwest Passage, so.
Thank you, sir.
I bear with you, thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Forrest Diliboo, seventeen-twenty-five Huntington Road, after being closed all summer, Downing Avenue is now open. I would encourage you folks to go on Downing from east to west and drive down there, and feel the dips and humps and bumps, and when you get down to Downing and Rin, look at the asphalt approaches for the sidewalk there, we had new ADA-approved concrete in there prior to this recon, we tore them out, less than a year old, now we've got asphalt, seems to me like we could have left the concrete and not done all that. I've also heard that the west end of Downing is not going to be done this year, which probably means that asphalt, non-ADA-approved asphalt, unless they have a special deal for asphalt, probably won't get done for several years, or until they decide to do the rest of it. And the Downing was done, it looks like in one block sections, do a block, miss a block, do a block, miss a block. It looks like a patchwork job. After being closed all summer, I expected to have a new, all reconed street, it's a poor use of our city tax dollars, thank you.
Thanks, Forrest.
Mr. Mayor, I did drive that today, the forest, apparently I went the wrong way, I went west to east, but still the same effect, so there's that patchwork on the sidewalk, asphalt on where the sidewalk should be, and it looks horrible compared to the way it was, and it is, you know, you've got a nice stretch of road, and then you've got an old piece, and then nice and old, it's, I agree with Forrest, it's not as desirable as we would have liked.
We should take that up with our engineering department and see what's up with that, it's, no, that's okay, we will, let's see her.
It's a bigger conversation.
Go, Camire, five-twenty-six Home Park Boulevard, Waterloo. I'm here for just a couple reasons, and I, I just thought I'd express to you, it's been an interesting year, I learned what our city government's all about, and I found out that I thought we had an open, honest, and transparent government, but I understand you've got to fight to find out anything you want to find out, and pay for it to boot, which really disappoints me, because I'm just not that kind of person, I'm more of an open person, and I say what I mean, and I mean what I say, and it's kind of hard dealing with you people. And I speak for a lot of people, one of the most frequent questions I've been asked this year is, aren't you afraid of what you're doing? And I mean, this is coming from people that I don't have a clue who they are, it's just afraid, it's amazing how many people are afraid to come and stand up here and speak their convictions to our city, and that's, it's sad, and we've been blatantly told, flat out, you're not going to answer our questions, and I think that's sad, that's really sad. I know there's people sitting here, these people that are sitting here are not stupid, when we ask them questions, I know there's people sitting here that can answer those questions, we're not up here to confront you, we're just up here to gain knowledge, and I think it's been a real interesting year to see how our city operates. With that, I will tell you, I respect all of you, I don't come up here because I dislike anybody sitting in this room up here, I like every one of you. When I come up here and talk, and just like my cohorts that come up here, it's about issues, it's not about you as people, and we're viewed, when we come up here, as a person, that's a bad person, because we're asking questions, and I think that's sad, that's really sad, and I commend all you people for the job you do, I commend all of you, I know it's a tough job, I know you're dealing with the city, I know you're dealing with the public, and I know you're not going to agree with us all the time, but I still have a lot of respect for all of you, and I praise you for the job that you're doing, and I thank you for the job that you're doing, and I appreciate the job you're doing, but that doesn't mean that I can't disagree with you on issues, only issues, not you as persons. And I just wanted to make that perfectly clear here at the end of the year, because guess what, I'm going to be back next year, I'm going to be asking questions, and I'm going to be irritating people, I suppose, but you know what, when I do that, it makes my day. With that, I'd like to wish you all a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year to all of you and your families, I hope you have a happy holidays, and I hope it's a joyous holiday for all of you, and again, I appreciate all of your services, thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
John Sherbin, seventeen-fifteen Robin Road, with the, all the things that are happening in the world, we got to command the fire, and the police departments, I had my scanner on that incident happened last week with, I believe it was Carter, and I listened to that gal, she's very professional, in a severe crisis situation, total amazement that things could have been a whole lot worse, and that just goes to show us, with the way the world is, we've got to work together, you know, if we see things that are not right, we need to call in, you know, and I think a lot of the citizens do, we sure do, or try to do as the groups that are here, but we need to work together on a lot of these issues and see, you know, this is, this world's getting pretty nasty, and we've got a pretty nice town here, and I sure like to keep it that way, thank you.
Thanks, John. Is anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Walsh, don't take my thunder, go ahead.
Okay, this is my last meeting as city attorney, so I wanted to thank you all for the opportunity, and wish you all well, unlike some of the people who comment here each week, I know this is an open and honest government, so thank you.
Yeah, I was going to save my comments for, about Jim, until, I have comments about something else that I want to talk about tonight also, but, yes, sir?
Could I jump in, because I want to let you wrap it up, so I would just like to echo what was said to all my fellow council members and department heads, and everybody watching us at home, that wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and a Happy Hanukkah, and a Happy Kwanzaa, and a Happy two thousand and fifteen.
Is there anyone else? Okay, I am going to defer to my comments about Jim in a couple minutes, but most of you, all of you folks that come regularly, and I know all of the council and department heads, remember our good friend Don Miller, who comes to us often, he owns the quarry out on, off of Broadway, I believe, but at least that's where he lives, and Don is, has been in strong and vocal opposition to the sportsplex for as long as we've been talking about a sportsplex, but Don always comes to us in a very professional manner, and very respectful, and very businesslike, and is the epitome of being a person that can object without being objectionable, and just does a good job when he comes and talks to us. Don called my office last week and wanted to make an appointment with me on Friday, and assuming that he was going to be taking issue with something about the sportsplex, I went and got my most recent figures and my most recent numbers, and was hopefully going to be ready for Don when he started talking about the sportsplex. Don came in and gave me a check for a thousand dollars, made out to the city of Waterloo, to buy the first set of body cameras for the police department, that's the kind of guy Don Miller is. So, I was so humbled and so impressed, and just what a remarkable guy that he is, that he would do that, I just, I was really, was really humbled. So, I wanted to tell you about it, and I wanted to tell everybody that's watching on television tonight how impressed I was of that gesture, we have deposited that check and now started a fund for body cameras, we're going to go ahead with our grant ask to the Eyelet Free, we still would like to get that money, but I'm going to start challenging our public, also, there's lots of folks out there that could afford to give a couple of bucks to a body camera program, we have a line item now for it, we can, I'll take it, the clerk's office will take it, Michelle Wheaton will take it, I'm assuming you'll take money, won't you?
I'll find some way.
So, anyway, God bless my friend Don Miller, what a guy, so, Don, if you're watching, you're special, and speaking of special, Jim Walsh is special, ladies and gentlemen, he's had his critics over the years, he's had his critics of late, but I will tell you that Jim is a good friend of mine, and this town is much, much better off because of Jim Walsh, for what he has given to us intellectually by being the city attorney, he is, he is just incredible with his breadth of knowledge on city government, you can't just walk out and find an attorney on the street that is familiar with city government, it takes a special training and special knowledge, and Jim has that. Jim also has an incredible knowledge of business law, and has helped us through some very difficult times with contracts, development agreements, et cetera, et cetera. Probably more importantly to me, that the type of government we have in Waterloo is a strong mayor, city government, so there's the mayor, and then there's the council and department heads, there's no assistant mayor, there's no vice mayor, there's no city manager, there's no council, there's no person to go to that is experienced and knowledgeable when it comes to stuff that mayors need to be advised on. I know that I have leaned very heavily on Jim, I know Tim did, I think John did, I think every mayor that Jim has worked for has done the same, Dave Zelfer's going to be an incredibly good city attorney, but I will tell you. I will tell you from my heart, I'm going to miss Jim Walsh. He's, he's been an asset for this city for twenty-three years, and shame on you that criticize him. He's been a tremendous asset. So, with all of that said, it's our last meeting of twenty-fourteen. It's hard for me to believe that we're, we're having this. We're going to start twenty-fifteen, and January fifth, I wish all of you a blessed Christmas. I hope you have it with your family, and I hope you stay safe, and we'll see you January fifth.
A motion received. Follow oral comments and adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or adjourned? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.